Good evening. I'd like to call the January 8, 2019 Board of Education meeting to order. And at this time, I'd like to call forward Reverend Mark Akanocho to lead us in prayer.
Happy New Year, everyone. It's good to be here to see your board and to see all these beautiful faces. It's a blessing to come and lead in our prayer. And let's bow our head in prayer. Our dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you have made and we are glad and we're rejoicing in it. Lord, we thank you for your word in Matthew 5:16 that said, "Let your light so shine that others will see our good work and your good work and glorify your heavenly Father, which is in heaven." Father, we thank you because this board, Lord, you've called them to do this work at this time. But I pray for everyone. I pray for the men and women. I pray for the chair. I pray for every members of the board, the vice chair. Lord, I pray that you bless every one of them. I pray that you bless their service to this community. I pray that you bless their families. And I pray, oh, Lord, that they will remember that they are a light to this community and they will let their light shine, that others will know that they are believers and that they are people of faith. Thank you, Father God, for everything that you're doing. We bless your name. We exalt you, oh, Lord, in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. At this time, I'd like to call forward Mr. Brandon Ramirez, who is our Skills USA National President, President for the entire nation and the Skills USA delegation, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we're moving to our public comments portion of the meeting. And it appears we have one public comment, and Mr. Dane West. And I remind our public comments that this is a three-minute time limit, and Dr. Bryan will be taking time. And also, please direct your comments to the whole board and not one individual person. Thank you, sir.
All right. Good evening. To begin, I just want to say that my hopes were high after the most recent election for many reasons. One of the major reasons being that I believe that major changes to the Board of Education, where it's going to come with a sweep of the incumbents. After reading the Sanford Herald this morning, my hopes were dashed, as it was there that I learned that the Board of Education was going to vote to extend the school day by 15 minutes for the rest of the year, starting January 22nd. The reasoning for this change being hurricane days and snow days. Doing the math for this change shows that this would equal approximately eight extra days of work if we don't get any more snow days for Lee County School employees. Many employees worked optional workdays during the hurricanes. We later found out that the state was forgiving those days. Now, we find out that we are making up those days, in effect, causing those of us who went into work those hours more than once. Looking at the financial aspect of eight extra days, as a second-year teacher, I will be out approximately $1,440, plus any sick or personal days that would be accumulated. The cherry on top of all this is what continues to be viewed as a disrespectful attitude that is being shown to employees, the lack of transparency, as we would not have found out about this vote beforehand were not for the Herald, but also that, as far as I'm aware, teacher feedback was not considered before the motion is going to be made. I'm a teacher. I do not expect to become a rich man in my profession. I do expect to be compensated for my time and respected, if not by my politicians in Raleigh, then my local school board. The question is constantly asked, why the turnover rate in this county is so high tonight? Ladies and gentlemen, it's one of those reasons. Thank you.
All right. Moving on into our Lee County Schools' vision and policy. Lee County Vision.
Lee County Schools and partnership with the community will provide challenging learning experiences for students in a safe and supportive environment. We are committed to academic excellence, technological innovations, social responsibility, and lifelong learning. Our success will be demonstrated by the achievement of our students and their positive participation in our society.
Thank you, Mrs. Swamac. And on to our Code of Ethics.
The Board recognizes that collectively and individually, all members of the Board must adhere to an accepted Code of Ethics in order to improve public education. Members of the Lee County Board of Education should avoid conflicts of interest and appearance of conflicts of interest as we handle the work of the Board, avoid the solicitation and/or acceptance of gifts in return for advice or assistance on matters concerning the operation of the business of the Board, avoid the misuse of public funds, avoid misrepresentation or falsification of facts, and avoid making confidential information public. The Board accepts the Code of Ethics established by the North Carolina School Board Association.
Thank you, Mr. McCracken. At this time, I will call for approval of our agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the agenda for January the 8th, 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please, by light sign, saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. This time, I'll call for the approval of our minutes for December 11, 2018.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the minutes for December the 11th, 2018.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor in the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, light sign. Motion passes. Moving into the Chairman's Report, I would first like to say welcome back to our students, staff, and faculty after our Christmas break, which is much needed across the board, from students all the way up to our administration and faculty and staff. I know that it's working in education as well, that it's well-needed rest at that point. Also, I wish Godspeed to all those involved in our exams that are coming up pretty soon. I can remember when I was a student here at Lee County High School and stressing and studying for those exams as well. One other note before we move forward, I also want to congratulate Mrs. Eddings, who was recently named our Central Region Teacher of the Year. So, congratulations to her. At this time, I'd like to bring forward Mr. Brandon Ramirez, again, our Skills USA National President, who is a student here at Lee County High School, to update us on what he has done so far and what Skills USA means to him. Thank you, Brandon.
First off, I just want to say thank you to the Board in general, just for all the things we've been able to do. There are roughly over 40 members in Skills USA at Lee County High School. In the state of North Carolina, we have over 5,300. In the nation, we have over 421,139. Hi, I'm Brandon Ramirez, and I am currently serving as the National President for Skills USA. Like I said, there's a lot of familiar faces here, so I'll keep this whole portion about me kind of brief. I started my public education at Lee County High School at BT Billig Elementary School. Later on, I went to Wesley Middle School, and that's where I really gained this passion that I have now for career in technical education. I had the opportunity to be in a STEM class, and for the first time, I was learning with my hands. I was building things. I was actually learning the way that I know now is the way I've meant to be taught all of my life. Continuing that on into high school, I'm currently enrolled in the Academy of Engineering, under the eyes of Mr. Henry Beck, there, the greatest engineering teacher anybody could ask for. He was the one that got me into this program, into Skills USA. Being a freshman, I was really shy, really introverted. I really didn't know what I wanted to do, but he was the one that really pushed me and said, hey, this Skills USA thing could be really good for you. Even if you just compete, it's an opportunity to meet a lot of new people, go to a lot of really cool places, and just have a good time. And I like to call it the best decision that's ever been made for me, because it really is. That one conversation that I had with him, that one decision that we made together has changed my life more than I can even explain. That next year, I ran to be a local officer, then a regional officer, and a state officer, all within the same year. All throughout my junior year, I served as the State President for Skills USA, North Carolina. This past summer, in Louisville, Kentucky, at our national conference, I ran to be a National Officer. And thanks to the amazing state officer team we have in North Carolina, the amazing support we have here back home, and just thanks to so many people, I was able to win one of those positions, and I'm currently serving as the National High School President of Skills USA. Like I said, none of that could have been done without the support that we have here at the local level. The work that all of you do is directly influencing students just like me. And now, really, to update you on what has been going on within our local chapter, I want to call up a really good friend of mine, the best state president that I know. There's no one I would rather have really have filled my position, other than my good friend Greeley Hipper.
So, the 2017-2018 school year has been one of the most successful for our Lee County High School Skills USA chapter. In March, 37 members traveled to Fayetteville Tech Community College for the South Central Region Rally. Thirty-four of those 37 placed in their competitions, and of those, 23 won gold medals. Out of the seven returning South Central Regional Officers, five of them were from Lee County High School. Similarly, five of the newly-elected Regional Officers were, in fact, from our chapter. The Skills USA North Carolina State Conference was another big accomplishment for Lee County High School. In April, our chapter was awarded a Silver Level Chapter of Distinction for the Chapter Excellence Program. The Chapter Excellence Program is designed to create a healthy chapter based on school and community involvement. Only three chapters of our over 150 in the state received this level of distinction, so it's a really big deal. Out of the 34 members we brought to Greensboro, 25 of them placed in their individual competitions. For the second year in a row, Lee County High School takes home state champions in both mobile robotics and for chapter display. For the first time in our chapter, we had two Skills USA State Officers elected to serve at one time. This would make the third consecutive year that the Skills USA North Carolina State President was from Lee County High School. Not only does our chapter take time to diligently work on our competitions, but we also find it very important to give back to the community that helps us succeed. This past summer, our Skills USA chapter participated in the annual Sanford Block Party. We helped to paint landscape, as well as do some light carpentry work around Sanford. This event was a success both for the city of Sanford and for our chapter in their leadership and teamwork capabilities. Both of our national competitor teams worked hard and competed well at the National Leadership and Skills Conference in Louisville, Kentucky. Lee County High School's very own Brandon Ramirez ran for an at-large National Officer position at the High School Division. He now is the Skills USA National High School President. The hard work from our chapter, the success that we have had this past year as a chapter, cannot possibly be attributed to one thing or one person. The hard work from our chapter members, the leadership roles from the local, regional, state, and even national level, and the unconditional support we have gotten from our advisors, as well as members of the community, have all helped us in our journey. And I could not be prouder to represent such a willing and phenomenal chapter. Thank you.
So, ultimately, that really is the end of our formal remarks. Like I said, we just want to thank all of you for all the work you have done and are willing to do for students just like me and Greeley. It's thanks to all of you that I've been able to go to Washington, DC, three times, Texas, two times, Illinois, God knows where else, in the last, like, five months, because of all the work that you've been able to do. So, really, ultimately, this is a thank you to all of you, because in the end, we serve Lee County High School. We may be a part of a national organization, but this is where we call home. So, thank you.
Greeley, can you come back up?
Yeah.
I want to be first to say that, well, Brandon, you know this, and many people don't. I wear that red blazer just like y'all did, and maybe in a different name many years ago. And it has been an honor to work with both of you over this time, and such an honor that I'm also the advisor as the Skills USA chapter over at CCC. And alumni, I could go into it before I start crying and all that good stuff, but thank you both, because you really are a shining light to this high school, and thank you for all that you do. And I'll open the floor for any comments from other board members.
Well, thank you, both of you. You show people that students can go just about as far as they want to go, and it takes effort. Appreciate that very much.
Yeah, congratulations. Thank you.
Great job, you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon, and I thank y'all for coming tonight. Keep up the good work. Thank you. At this point, that concludes my Chairman's Report, and we're moving to the Superintendent's Report.
Is Paulette Wall here? I'd like to ask Paulette to come forward, please. Paulette, welcome to Lee County. Paulette has a special presentation to make on behalf of North Carolina Department of Public Instruction.
Thank you, Dr. Bryan and Superintendent Kelly, I mean Chairman Kelly. My name is Paulette Wall. I am a Program Specialist for the North Carolina Homeless Education Program. I come tonight on behalf of Lisa Phillips, the coordinator, the state coordinator for the North Carolina Homeless Education Program, to present our first annual Homeless Liaison of the Year. And that recipient is none other than Dr. Johnny Waller, if she could come forward. We wanted to present this award when Lisa told myself and Patricia Lance, who is the other Program Specialist, I need you guys to come up with the liaison, who will be the first homeless liaison for North Carolina of the year. For me, it wasn't very hard. Immediately, Dr. Waller came to my eye. She has been a trailblazer in homeless education. As you can see, she will also be the first one on this plaque for the next 12 years, so that every homeless liaison of the year will have to follow in her footsteps to get their names placed on this plaque. And so, we also present this to Lee County Schools for the remainder of the school year to display that you have the first homeless liaison for the state of North Carolina. So, we would like to thank you for allowing us to be here this afternoon to present this prestigious award to Dr. Waller.
Paulette, if I could say two things. One, I think you said it right. Other people are going to have to fill some very big shoes and walk in some very big steps to follow Dr. Waller in what she does for the homeless. And secondly, usually in this place in the program, we usually like to take, for anyone who's recognized, we like to take a picture with the board. Would you all be willing to stand here with the board and have a picture taken? I think it'd be a great way to sort of commemorate this.
Yes, we will.
Great. All right. Thank you. Absolutely. Dr. Waller?
Thank you. Thank you to the North Carolina Homeless Education for supporting me. They never quit taking my calls. They always were very willing to answer anytime I called. Paulette, Lisa, and Patricia have been wonderful, and I appreciate them so much. Also, thank you to my family. They support me in everything that I do, and I couldn't be here without them. And most of all, when Lisa first told me about this, I thought, why in the world? How in the world? And then I realized, this is not for me. This is for Lee County and all we do for students. Also, the group that's fixing to leave out the back door. They are phenomenal. They really put the best interest, the love, and the heart in our program, and I'd like to thank them for the support that they give, and also for you as board members, for all you do for our children. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations again, Dr. Waller. Also, I'd like to mention for everybody, January is School Board Appreciation Month. And I know that it's a difficult job, but I think it's worth noting, I think, that how much you all make a difference for the children in Lee County, and how much we appreciate what you do. And it's not always easy, but I know where your hearts are, and just appreciate what you do as board members, and very thankful for what you do. Finally, our accountability update. As Mr. Kelly mentioned before, we'll be having exams coming up very soon, both EOCs and regular exams and final exams, so we'll be heading into second semester. Mr. Chair, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Bryan. Moving right on to our committee reports, I would like to call on Dr. Stephen Colby for our CNI report.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to indulge the group, or have the group indulge me for a few moments. We have no CNI meeting tomorrow, but I have been involved with the CNI now for two years. And had a conversation with a gentleman last month that made me do a little digging. When I first began teaching over at Grace Christian School, the going stat for North Carolina Public Schools, it was that we were rated number 36 in the nation. I have watched over the past 10 years where the quality of the public education in this county has risen steadily. I decided to do a little research, in particular, on some of the things that have happened since Dr. Bryan has been in office. And he's indulged me also. I've come and pestered him about two or three times for some stats that I wanted. But I'd like to read just a short article here first that was found in the Sanford Herald, opinion page, November the 24th, and it goes directly to what I was talking about. "North Carolina Has Below-Average Schools. You Just Can't Look at Average Test Scores Across the Country. Pick the Highest Ones, Then Say These States Must Have the Best School Systems. Students Come to School With a Variety of Advantages and Challenges, Relative Proportion of Which Are Not Equally Distributed Across the States. Schools Matter a Lot, of Course, But It Would Be Silly to Hold Them Fully Responsible for Educational Outcomes. When State-by-State Differences in Student Achievement are Adjusted for Student Background, North Carolina ranks 12th in the Nation in School Quality." Now, this is according to John Hood, who's with the John Locke Foundation. "I began school in northern Alabama. I would hate to hold today's numerical values up to the schools that I attended when I first began school, lest them, they just wouldn't make it. But what they did do with good teachers, and with teachers who care, and teachers who got into my business more than I wanted them to, they did develop a taste for education, and they did develop, with the students they had, a sense of character that could carry them through life. And by the way, any of you that are in my generation know, they taught you how to work, which is more than a lot of things." The second thing I have here, and I've got enough here to hold me for a little bit, but not too long, because I understand there's a ballgame tonight. According to Tim Hodges, and Tim Hodges is a pollster with Gallup, and there's Gallup, www.gallop.com/education, if you're interested in what he's got here. According to him, most parents measure the effectiveness of their high schools this way. Seventy-eight percent of them want to know that their students are engaged and that they're learning how to work. Seventy-seven percent of them want to know that their students feel hopeful. Sixty-nine percent across the nation want them to graduate. Thirty-eight percent want to know where they go to college, or can they go to college. That was a little bit of a shocker for me, because as a former administrator, college was the be-all. He also revealed a couple of other things. On his poll, that was at the School Board Association Convention that Dr. Smith and I attended, $1.4 trillion is in outstanding student loan debt. I checked it again last night. They've listed at $1.5 trillion in student loan debt. I'm very personal about that. My son-in-law, four years ago, paid off his college debt. He and my daughter have been married 20 years. Mr. Hodges said that student loans delay more education, they delay buying a home, they delay buying cars, they delay leaving home, they delay having children, they delay starting businesses, they even delay getting married, believe it or not. This is a real debt thing. Now, last month, I'm over at Tramway picking up barbecue, and I'm not going to advertise for them, but it was good. Standing in that restaurant, though, was a man who obviously worked for a living, very big guy, and he was beaming, still beaming. His daughter's been at work for three months, teaching, but he's still beaming that she finished college. And as he began to explain it to me, he said, "She finished with her associate's degree in high school. When she finished high school, she had her associate's degree, and we could afford college." That is not anything to sniff at. This man was so proud, because this was the first one in his family to go to college. The national debt, the individual debt, the family debts are very, very real to all of And as I said, I began to dig around a little bit. I asked Dr. Bryan for a list of stats, and I do apologize to Gary Hart, and I do apologize to you, Dr. Waller, because I did not dig into some of these things. They were a little complicated, so I just stuck with some of the basics. If you take the average cost of about $25,000 for two years of college, is that reasonable? Well, if you check with Google, it's more than reasonable. With $25,000 for two years of college, and you stack that up with 183 associate degrees that have been handed down in the last four years, and they weren't handed down, you know the students worked for them. You know the teachers pushed it, and you know the counselors pushed it, but they earned, 183 of them earned associate degrees in this county. Now, if you do the multiplication, that works out to about $4.5 million that Lee County Schools has put back into the hands of the parents in this county. And I thought, well, you know, nobody told me that before, and I like dealing with a little bit of money. Now, you can go high or low with that. If you go high, and you've got your child in a very private school like Campbell, it's going to be a lot more than that. But $4.5 million is, according to my books, real money. That's only a part of it. I teased Dr. Bryan about it when I went to see him, and he does have a sense of humor. I don't care what you think. I said, you know, back in about 2015, I was still over at Lee Christian School- I said, you know, back in about 2015, I was still over at Lee Christian School, and we had fourteen or fifteen of our kids earn a million dollars in scholarships. And yeah, I'm a bit of a braggart. At Lee Christian School, I waved that flag. At the same time, Lee County Schools ran in the paper that they had given about two million dollars. Now, if you find the correct answer to change that, please do. And oh, I felt so good about that. But do you know what's happened? That was in 2015. In 2016, Lee County Schools, with their advisors, with everybody pushing, earned scholarships of four million nine hundred thousand dollars. In 2017, it was six million three hundred thousand dollars. In 2018, it was six million one hundred eleven thousand dollars and sixty-three cents. I'm sorry, but that's nineteen million dollars in four years, and it's because of this man's administration and it's because of all of the excellent people that we have working in the public school system. I worked in Christian education, pushing scholarships every year because our parents paid money to have their children in schools. It's encouraging to me to see that some folks here in our county, who would never have seen a college threshold, are able to go because of what the counselors and the teachers and the principals in Lee County Public School System are doing. Now, I told you I had to apologize. I could not figure out the numbers that I needed, but you know, when I get into this, we have somewhere between twenty million and twenty-five million dollars in four years that has been pushed back for our families in Lee County to use for college because they didn't spend it already. This doesn't even touch the credentials and vocational education that's going on also in the high schools. And I'll give you that report next time we meet, but thank you all very much for your patience.
Dr. Cobal, could we have the next scheduled meeting for curriculum and instruction?
I beg your pardon?
During your report, your CNI report, can you tell us when the next meeting is?
Uh, let's see, it's meeting on later on this month, I believe. I told Pam Sutton that I would be contacting her. Tomorrow's meeting is canceled.
Dr. Cobal, thank you for that. And moving right along to Dr. Lynn Smith for F and T.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I start, I would like to compliment Dr. Cobal on his very timely remarks and thanks for bringing us up to speed on how our students are performing. We needed to hear that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, it seems like that the Facilities and Technology Committee has been meeting about every month, every week for the last month. I'd like to go all the way back to December the sixth. That was our first meeting in December, on which we were tasked to begin the redesigning the attendance district for the new WB Wicker School. And at that meeting, it was a consensus of the committee to approve the following as criteria for WB Wicker Elementary School redistricting. The first was transportation, as in buses. The second was neighborhood integrity, and the third was overpopulation. That information was given to Mr. Don Kavatchik, who is currently working on some plans for this attendance district. We also received a report from Mr. McNeil, and the construction and renovations of WB Wicker School are on time and on budget. The capacity for the WB Wicker School will be nine hundred and sixty-nine students, which includes pre-K students. The pre-K students will be assigned by the Partnership for Children. Approximately six hundred and fifty to seven hundred district attendants will be at WB Wicker, and approximately two hundred to two hundred and fifty choice attendants will be at Wicker. The next meeting was on December the twelfth. Here again, the attendance zone at WB Wicker is the subject, and it was a consensus of the committee to approve the WB Wicker School redistricting timeline, and we all have that timeline in our minutes. Is that on the website, by the way?
Yes, sir.
It is? Good. At that point in time, on December the twelfth, Chris McNeil reported that the WB Wicker Elementary School is still on budget and on schedule. We then met on January the seventh. Here again, we're still working on redistricting, and it was a consensus of the committee to jointly combine the Tramway Elementary School and the WB Wicker Elementary School lottery schedules. Now, that applies to the children who apply that school by choice. It is a magnet school. And we want to do that so that it goes by the same schedule that we have at Tramway and the same procedures would be involved. And there's a couple of things I'd like to mention that are on the timeline that you have in your minutes. On February the seventeenth, we will receive some of those maps. Don Kavatchik, apparently, is preparing at least three district maps for us to consider. On January the twenty-second, he will present those three plans to this board, and the F and T committee will share which is our preference. On January the thirty-first is a public hearing on the preferred option, and on February the fifth is a secondary public hearing on the preferred option. So two public meetings, January the thirty-first, February the fifth. And I think it's very important to keep the public informed and for us to be informed of what the public thinks, what this attendance zone should look like. And our next meeting is on January the seventeenth, next week. And that completes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. One thing, the next CNI committee would be on January thirtieth at 3:00 PM at Southern Lee and be a house school meeting. Dr. Smith, Finance.
Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee has not met since our last meeting, but our next meeting is on Tuesday, January the twenty-second at 5:00 PM. And please note that we have the budget calendar is in new business tonight, so we hope that the budget calendar will be approved, and that will be guiding what the Finance Committee does for the next six months as we prepare the 2019-2020 budget proposal, which we will submit to the county commissioners on May the fifteenth. And that completes Finance, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Moving right along, Mrs. Womack, Policy, please.
Thank you. The Policy Committee met on the thirteenth of December to discuss and review Policy 5005, Public Information Program, and Policy 2123, Board Members' Opportunity for Development. In addition, the committee was provided with several examples for training manuals for committee review. Following the discussion, both of those two policies will return to the staff for one final review. We do not have any revisions at all from the North Carolina School Board Association. However, one of the roles of the School Health Advisory Council is to review Policy 4540, which includes student wellness. That policy is supposed to be reviewed on an annual basis, and the School Health Advisory Council would like to come to our policy meeting and suggest some revisions that we will be reviewing during that process as well. So our next meeting is going to be on January the fifteenth. It's at 5:00 PM. It's on the second floor of the conference room in the Heinz Education Building, and we should be going over Policy Number 005, which is, again, Public Information Program, Policy 2123, Board Membership Opportunities for Development, in addition to five, I mean four, five, forty student wellness annually. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Womack, and thanks to all of the committees who work hard for this board. Moving right along to the approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented? A like sign? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Moving right along into our new business, this time I'd like to call up Mrs. Kelly Jones to talk about our 2019-2020 budget calendar.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you have a copy of the budget calendar. Is there any questions?
Yes, Ms. Kelly, I have a question.
Okay.
Is there any possibility that we would be able to add the milestone of the receipt of the audit?
Yes.
Or annual audit? If that should, I feel like that should actually be on our calendar as well because it would be hard for the board to move ahead in our workshop, anything that ends after the end of March without that audit in hand.
Okay. But I'll have to get that date from Dale, so I don't know. It might be something that we'll have to add once we receive that from Dale.
Okay.
Any other comments from anybody on the board?
And there's nothing unusual about this calendar. This is customarily the way we do it, and we do it as prescribed by both county commissioners and state legislature.
That is correct. And we do meet, you will see on there, we do meet with the directors and as well as the principals, and they all come in and talk over through their budgets, and then you guys are presented with copies of their request.
If not, I'll call for a motion with the one change mentioned.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the 2019-2020 budget calendar as it presented with the noted change.
Second.
All in favor? Like sign aye?
Aye.
All opposed? The budget calendar is approved. Moving right on along, Mrs. Jones, to the 2017-2018, 2018-2019 Revised Budget Resolution.
Okay. You all have copies of those resolutions. I'll be the first to admit, I did make a mistake and I pulled the wrong document when I went to update it. As you'll realize, numbers are my thing and not so much the words. So that was incorrect, and I'll take full blame for that. But at recommendation of our auditors, he said that it was truthfully that you could see that the intention was, as we have done in the past, to adopt that at the five thousand, six thousand, seven thousand, and eight thousand dollar, eight thousand number purpose level. And so it was his recommendation, and he has spoken with the local government commission, and they said that they did not see a reason that we could not make this change, as it was obvious from even the additional budget amendments that it was completed at that purpose function level.
Thank you, Mrs. Jones. This time, is there any discussion?
And does the legislature not approve these sorts of budget resolutions as necessary?
He did consult the local government commission just to ask if, you know, upon his recommendation, and they did say that they would recommend, that said that it was obvious that we had recommended it at that level. I did look back, and that language was pulled from the thirteen-fourteen year. I had pulled the resolution from the thirteen-fourteen, and we have actually, from the county itself, have been only required to adopt it at the purpose level since fourteen-fifteen year.
Ms. Jones, you shouldn't be too hard on yourself. A superintendent should have caught that.
None.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, before we vote to make this budget resolution change, I believe it would be in order for either superintendent or the Finance Committee to render a report detailing specifically why the changes are needed. For example, why the auditor is just now noticing the misstated wording rather than a year ago when the previous board voted on the resolution. What role, if any, does the previous Finance Committee or the Chief Officer, Chief Financial Officer play in this oversight? What specifically does the local government commission find objectionable in the current wording? Why must we change the old resolution if it's adjusted administrative oversight? And what authority do we have to change the work of our prior Board of Education? Finally, why should we vote to eliminate the internal fiscal control in place that requires the superintendent to notify us when ten percent or more of any budget line item is moved? I believe this control mechanism is prudent, helps us to be vigilant on financial irregularities.
Mr. Chair, I have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
It's now, it's appropriate time. I actually spoke with the auditor, and for those of you in the audience who don't clearly understand, independent audit means an independent audit, independent outside of other factors. The auditor works for the board members, not the chairman, not the superintendent. The only thing that's required from the school system is to provide the documentation. That being said, I spoke with him, and in discussion with our auditor this week, I learned for the first time that we have expended as much as seven hundred thousand dollars in external legal fees, which appears to be hundreds of thousands of dollars over budget this year from that line item. I do not recall ever being briefed on this by the Finance Committee at any time over the past year. The public has a right to know about these disbursements, and the board must be kept informed on such matters if we are to effectively manage this budget for the year. Now, the auditor is concerned that we may be doing a deficit spending in the next year, dipping once again into our fund, which he briefed us last year on, our fund balance to cover unexpected major expenses. He cautioned us on this a year ago. If you recall, the sixty-eight-page budget that was handed to us right before the meeting started, if you guys do not know this, this was a budget that was given to us before one of our meetings, he went in detail on what we should and should not be doing. First of all, I'd like to suggest that all new board members be given a copy of last year's audit. Now, the auditor went on to say that he cautioned us a year ago about overspending and draining our fund balance below the level that the local government commission would find acceptable. Once talking to the local government commission, the new board members, the three brand-new board members on here cannot, it would be highly inappropriate for them to revise any type of resolution. So I would like to see that in writing before anyone attempts to say we make a decision on that. A board that is elected today cannot change a resolution for a school year that we have already went through and closed out that school year. Again, during that conversation, so everyone's on the same boat, and every member of this board has the ability to call the auditor to answer your questions. I am the board member who asked what the lawyer's fees were outside of Jimmy Love. I have been asking for six months without an answer. Obviously, I do not have the same relationship that Dr. Cobal has in requesting information. Merely saying that we need to change this resolution because the front and the back does not match is insufficient. What is on the back allows the board to have additional steps so that we are fully informed. And I'm not blaming you, I'm not blaming a Finance Committee. The board itself has yet to ever, since I have been on this board, sit down and thoroughly discuss our expectations and what should be expected. As the community as a whole will learn, that seven hundred thousand dollars went out in legal expenses. That is very alarming to me, ma'am, and again, I'm not pointing a finger at you. What I'm trying to say is I will not, under any circumstance, support removing any physical control, even if we strike out notifying the county commissioners. The community has a right to know. Now, when the superintendent moves any substantial amount of money, that was the part of our policy. We have not only, I suggest, when the auditor comes to present his case to us, the audit to us, you will find that not only are we in direct violation with the school board policy, we are also in direct violation of GS 115C-425 and the School Budget and Physical Control Act of GS 115C, Article 31. That being said, I will most definitely not be voting to accept these resolutions the way that they are written. No further comment.
Any other comment from board members or motions? Here are none. Is there a motion on the table?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Lee County Board of Education approve the revised 2017-18 and the 2018-19 budget resolutions.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
I second it.
All in favor of the resolution being signed by raising your right hand? Those opposed, like sign with the right hand? Motion carries. All right. Moving along to our 2018-2019 revised school calendar, I invite up Dr. Dietrich and Mrs. Sharon Spence.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a comment before-
Yes, sir.
-Dr. Dietrich and Ms. Spence make a comment about the item with school calendars. As everybody knows, we had a pretty difficult first semester with weather, between hurricanes with Florence, which was forgiven time, and also with Michael, and also with some snow in December. As we came back, and I concerned it over the break, and also going into January, was a little concerned that between meetings of the board between now and February, that we might have more snow and bad weather. And I was hoping that we could be proactive in trying to add some time back into the school day, so we could make sure that we stay ahead of the game and make sure we have enough time banked in there so that we could, one, add some instructional time back in, and, number two, protect spring break for everybody, because it's a pretty long haul between January and spring. So, I wanted to make sure that we were proactive with that. The other thing, and I discussed this with staff as well, my hope was to take that to a point where we could get that into the early spring so that we could then make a decision if we even needed the 15 minutes anymore or not. So, I wanted to make sure everybody knew my thinking, because I'm the one to put this after consultation with the chair on the agenda to consider. And I'm also suggesting tonight, as we've looked through all the minutes and different things, that Tramway and Little League College would not be part of this, because they run on a little bit of different calendars, everybody knows, and there really, at this point, is not a need for that. My fear was getting to about the middle of February at our next board meeting and getting caught where we would have to start using some days out of spring break. So, I also want to make sure everybody knows the reasoning behind that, and that it was truly meant just to be proactive with what we're trying to do with saving the spring break.
Thank you, Dr. Brian. Didn't mean to interrupt you, Mr. Dietrich. Dr. Dietrich.
That's okay. I think actually Dr. Brian said a lot of what I was going to mention anyway. Mr. Chairman, members of board, thank you very much for having us back to talk about calendar once again. Dr. Brian did mention a lot of what was out there. I think there are a couple of things just to reiterate from what he said, and one thing to keep in mind from last year. Number one, we have, for a while, done the extra 15 minutes, which has been very well received, because we were trying to stay away from spring break as well as Saturdays, so that the staff members and the students and their families would have that time, which is a time that most people plan for trips and other events during that timeframe. The other piece is, we're also trying to be proactive, because we came very, very close last year. We were right around the 1,025, if I remember correctly, from last year, and we are just trying to make sure and pad the instructional time in the event that we do have some other weather come. We want to make sure that we are not as close to that. And again, it has been mentioned by Ms. Womack previously, we did lose a lot of instruction time, and we were wanting to make sure that we get back some of that instruction time that was lost, as well as to be proactive and help out kids who have already lost a lot of instruction time. So, that being said, by adding the 15 minutes a day starting January 22nd, it would add a total of 56.75 hours into the total time for the year. So, that takes us to about 1,081 hours. So, that gives us about nine days of bank time, just in case. So, that being said, with what Dr. Brian said, I think that we are ready to know if you have any questions.
And once again, just as a reminder, this will be just for traditional calendar, and also, I think it would be appropriate if, at the next two board meetings going in February and March, I would report back to you regarding time and what we still have banked, and hopefully by the March meeting, whether we would even need those 15 minutes yet, I mean, anymore or not.
Yes, so, Dr. Brian, is it possible that you would meet with some of the teachers, like the young man that spoke today earlier, for their input as well?
Well, I did, just to be frank, I'd be more than happy to meet with anybody who wants to talk about it. I did talk to principals about it, to share it with them, and make sure. The other thing is, is that the feedback we've gotten over the last five years when we've done this, I think it's been most every year. I don't want to say it, at least four out of five. We've gotten very positive feedback from our parents and staff about making sure that we save spring break, because my first year here, I think that was maybe the first time that it had changed from days to hours. Because as a school district, you can pick 185 days or 1,025 hours. Am I saying that right, Dr. Dietrich?
Correct, yes, sir.
So, as we went through that process, you know, we ended up missing a number of days for snow, not hurricanes, but snow. And we felt like that we would go with the hours, and we added the 15 minutes, and was very popular feedback we received from folks. So, I guess, roundabout way answering your question, I really felt like that it would, it's sort of become a norm for us as a district, but I'll talk to anybody about it, it's fine.
Thank you.
I actually had the opportunity to speak to some teachers today, about five or six, and it was a, and I spoke to Dr. Brian and Dr. Dietrich about this today, was mixed reviews, but I think the biggest problem they saw was that we need to communicate better to them, and that's why we have you here before, so we're going to ask you some questions and kind of clear up some misconceptions and that kind of thing. And then also, last year, I spoke at each CNI committee, last year, elementary, middle, and high school, talking about this very subject, and brought it before last year and got feedback as well. I open the floor again for any other discussion on this.
Mr. Chairman, I value the instructional time that we're gaining back for these days, but also value the teachers. And I'd like to just ask Dr. Dietrich, Ms. Spence, someone, what our other options are. I think we've already addressed some of that. How can we not make this mistake in the future? But more importantly, is there a way to, if we do not use the, these minutes, let's say it's a mild winter, and we've still got days left over, are we able to, I call it back-bank or front-bank and allow teachers their annual leave time back? Or if we get to the end of the year, are we allowed to use that time to affect, on the positive side, for them for their annual leave or optional or required workdays?
Would you, I think Ms. Jones can maybe address that, that specific piece about the annual, annual leave, right?
Yes, sir.
I'm not this tall.
I can relate to that.
One of the questions that, we've been getting quite a few questions this week, and one of the things that, and I explained it to Ms. Sutton this afternoon, she had the question. A lot of people are feeling like with this coming out, Finance did send out paperwork stating that the teachers would have to take an annual leave day for December the 12th, for the day that they missed. And I think this is where some of the confusion is coming in. But we had instructed them and told them that once, if, because, the reason why we instructed them is that, is because the board was not going to vote till tonight, and payroll was due in the morning. So, by law, we have to have something in place. But we did put a notation at the bottom that stated that if they did not, that if the board did approve that time, then that annual leave day would not be docked to their time.
So, if we approve the 15 minutes tonight-
Correct.
-no annual leave for those days is charged to employees?
Correct.
Can we approve tonight, or that if there's extra time still banked after the winter, that annual leave can be used to their advantage at the end of the year as well? I don't know if that makes sense.
I think what, if we could, what I'd like to do is to come back and, I think we could get to the same place where you want to be. If we get to early spring, and we feel like that it's been mild, been a mild winter, I think we can-
We can adjust it accordingly.
-we can adjust the 15 minutes, and you all can vote to back off the 15 minutes, and then we're back into regular schedule.
And then that would equal out to your annual leave time that occurred-
We could make it to where it would equal out.
Make it where it would equal out.
Because we'll make sure that it's recorded correctly.
Can we be extra diligent at explaining this to our teachers in a way that they can understand, because some of them are really concerned about this, and it's causing them to have morale issues, and we want to avoid that if there's any way possible.
Okay. We'll be glad to. Typically, what we do is we send that information out to the bookkeepers, as well as the principals, and rely on them for getting the information out. But if the board would so like, we would be glad to do what we need to. We can send something through, Ms. Spence.
Other questions or comments? I appreciate trying to save spring break, and, because I'm sure there's plenty of families that have plans and that kind of thing, and I appreciate all the time that you three and Dr. Brian have put into this. You know, it takes 24 days and 15 minutes to make up one day. So, I don't have any other further comments, and if there's no other comments from the board, we entertain any motion.
Before I make this motion, since Mr. McCracken is our only active teacher, are these answers satisfactory to the conversations that we've had before?
They are. I'd just like to add, I had the fine opportunity to discuss this term of my lunch hour today too with 11 teachers, and it was a fantastic conversation. I think it was a conversation we all needed to have tonight, just to make sure we're valuing our student instructional time, but also valuing our teachers. So, thank you.
And the fact that we can revisit this-
Yeah, I would like to revisit it, so we're not in this position and learn more about how many days we generally bank versus what's our average for the last 10 years, days we're missing. I know this has been a crazy first semester, but I think we could diligently work to make sure that we've got all of ducks in a row next fall to alleviate some of this.
So, you're comfortable with this?
Yes, sir.
In that case, I'd like to make a motion that the Lee County Board of Education approve the revised 2018-2019 calendars.
With the additions of pulling Little League College and Tramway out-
Are excluded from the motion.
Are excluded.
Yes.
Is there a second?
No second.
All in favor of the approved revised calendar with the changes noted? Signify, must say an aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Thank you all for your hard work on this important subject, because our teachers are definitely important to us as a school system, as being a former teacher here in this county. I definitely have been in the same situation as you have been, Mr. McCracken. And this is for any teacher. You always can call me and speak, and of course, the two that are sitting over there in the corner grinning because they know they have before. I'm always open, and they're feeling to, you can always call me. With that, I will call for a motion for closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Lee County Board of Education go into closed session for the purpose of discussing information that is privileged, confidential, and not a public record under NCGS Section 143-318, 11A1.
Is there a second?
I second that motion.
All in favor of going into closed session, signify, must say an aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? We're in closed session. At this time, I'll call for a motion to resume open session.
I move we proceed with open session.
Is there a second?
No second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. At this time, I'll call for a motion of our personnel report.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the personnel report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any other, anything else coming forward to this board before we ask for the most important motion of the night? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Everybody, have a good night. Go pack.